6:30. Just so everybody knows, we are Norton Media Center is here recording the meeting. If anybody else is, please just let us know and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Which is the flag that we have got there.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, to my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So, the minutes from our last meeting, anybody have anything on that? Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from...
Second.
Second? Is it in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, actually, the warrants, I don't get them.
I have read and approved warrants totaling $519,495.3. We should add this into the record.
It looks like it's 665-061-08, which is what's in the agenda. Hold on, hold on. Yeah, so on the packet, that's dated 9/20, the one page reads 665-061-08. Do you see that, Dan?
Mm-hmm.
In your packet that's sent out, the one pager is the...
Okay, I didn't sign those ones. Thanks, Dan.
We can come back to it at the end, then.
Okay. Yeah, that was the last meeting, I was there to sign those.
Yeah, so we'll come back, Dan, if you are Catholic, to do the warrants at the end.
So, I just want to circle back. Did you guys have a chance to read the minutes from the executive session meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve those from September 20?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, student rep update?
Hi guys. Hi. So, we're going to start with the LG. There's a parent teacher connection fundraiser called the Booster Thon Fund Run. The goal is to raise $15,000 to support and provide enrichment for the LGN students. It's being held on Thursday, October 18.
At the YEL, last night, there was the Book of Big O Night, and over 100 families attended, and every child walked out with a coupon for a free book. And then, the YEL Parent Teacher Organization will be hosting the trunk or treat evening on Friday, the 26th.
The Norton Middle School girls soccer team has a 6-0 record right now, which is awesome. Their drone club had their first meeting, which is crazy. There's been a lot of collaborative work with Wheaton College. The Wheaton College basketball team is working with the student council with an anti-bullying initiative, and Wheaton students are helping tutor. And also, Officer Robichard of the Norton Police Department is going to begin the Project Alert Anti-Drug and Alcohol Program for the seventh grade students. This is the second year, and it was a big success the first year.
At the high school, we'll start with the sports. Girls volleyball has eight wins and five losses. Cross-country, last night, had seniors day, and both the girls and boys for cross-country won. Unified basketball has their first game tonight in Sea Tonk, which is pretty cool, since you guys voted on it last meeting. Varsity golf team has eight wins and four losses. Girls varsity soccer has four wins and one loss, and they're holding their Pizza Bowl fundraiser right now, so sadly, I'm missing out on that. And then, boys varsity soccer has all wins except for one tie with night field. Earlier in the month, there was Cory's Cause, which was an informational and impactful meeting all the students had in the auditorium, where someone who had gone through a heroin and opioid addiction talked to us, and it was very impactful, emotional, very good. I hope that we can kind of keep doing that for the freshmen, really. Yeah, it's really relevant. We have a good amount of new clubs at the high school. There's the Female Empowerment Club, the Esports Club, Board Game Club, and the Book Club. There was the College Fair last Thursday, and there were many representatives from many different colleges. Yesterday, the PSATs were taken by all the sophomores and some of the juniors, and the semi-formal is coming up for juniors and seniors.
That's a lot going on in the past few weeks. Thank you for the update. And actually, I want to try to get my hands on, maybe you guys can help me, the unified basketball schedule.
Absolutely.
So, maybe when there's another home game, that we can attend that. Yeah, that'd be great to know.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Any questions or anything? Okay. Alright, opening...
I can just add, I actually went to the Cory's Cause event at Wheaton that was sort of invited, families were invited to that, and it was sort of sad that there wasn't a large attendance. I think there might have been three or four parents, maybe five parents, from our district, but it was phenomenal, and I'm glad that there was positive feedback. I think it really is impactful when you can hear from somebody who was in high school, and sort of aspiring athlete, an honor student, who just made one bad choice and ended up in a really difficult situation. So, I do think that as a school department, we've been talking a lot about getting more of those opportunities for our students, but we really would love for our community to come out too and really hear, because it was amazing to hear them talk about it. So, thanks for bringing that up.
They did post it on social media, too.
Yeah.
They ended up sharing the YouTube video on social media, which was nice to be able to see it.
Yeah, it was really, there was a lot, there was a number of Wheaton College students, and I think it really does say a lot when it's just a peer who's kind of sharing his story, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, Michelle.
We just want to thank Chief Clark and Sergeant Dennett, who are really, to the NO program, the One Over Your Prevention and Education Task Force that the chief started, of which the school department is very well represented. We just want to publicly thank them for really being a rude person to work with the DA's office to make this happen at no cost to anyone, which is how the Cory's Cause goes through, but if it wasn't for them, it wouldn't have happened, especially because they did it as a two-tier, not only school day for a certain number of students, but then in the evening, open to the public. And we hope to do more stuff, more topics with Wheaton in the future.
That's great. Anything else? Alright, opening of school report, Mrs. Bolton.
Hi.
I'll sit in the front.
Alright. So, welcome to JCS, and thank you for some of my SBO reps being here tonight. I don't see any new staff, so.
Is Paige here?
Oh, he came in late. Okay, great.
Mrs. Bolton, if you would, we have a nice seat over there for you, instead of the back to the camera, you know, this would be playing in Finland at midnight. The table's going to carry it. People get it there quick.
Alright, how's it? You like it?
Much better. Yes.
Alright. So, it was very smooth beginning again for the school year. We had some changes over the summer and last spring. Once again, quite a few people had to move. We added a preschool classroom, so we needed to move some first grades. We had lots going on this summer, the summer program at JCS, and then we had the TPC that usually uses our facilities in the fall. So, I have to say, the custodians did an awesome job just getting everything ready for the beginning of the school year. We also had two of our preschool teachers work on curriculum, because this year, we added two full-day pre-kingdom classes. So, we have Ms. Hawley and Ms. Monica teaching four days a week, full day for our four-year-olds. So, that was new. And due to the full-time classes, we actually added a lunch, so we have four lunches now, because we couldn't have kindergarten and first grade go together. So, lunch hour is kind of a long stretch of the day, but we just couldn't fit everyone in there. But the preschoolers are doing a pretty good job, you know, being four-years-old and being in that big cafeteria. And the teachers also worked on curriculum over the summer, because now that they have the extended day, it's a little bit different than two-and-a-half hours normally that we would have. We do have some new staff. Paige is over here, Paige Coffey. She's our new special education teacher in the language-based classroom for grades one and three, one through three. And then, I believe you met Jeremy Place already at the LGN, our new music teacher. We share him between the two schools. And then, she's not new, but she's new to JCS and LGN, is Kristy Dietz. She's the math specialist. She also works with our teachers now. And then, we hired seven halftime Paris this year. So, we have Brianna Bly, Rachel Chericello, Catherine DiNocchio, Jennifer Fritz, Elizabeth Royo, Megan O'Donnell, and Rebecca Volte. And some of these have been our subs in the past and also parents. And then, we were able to keep Kayla Kelly. She was a kindergarten teacher last year, but because we added the preschool classroom, and she had some experience in the past in preschool, so she's our new preschool teacher now. Enrollment, we have 98 students in preschool currently, which is about 30, probably a little over 30 more students than we had last year. So, Mrs. Kiefer has done an awesome job recruiting new families to come to our preschool. We have 66 students that are in either AM or PM, and then we have 32 students in the full-day, four-day program. Kindergarten, we have 90 students, which five of them are school choice, and the class sizes are between 22 and 23. In grade one, we have 104 students, nine of those are school choice, and the classes range from 18 to 23. Grade two, we have 99 students with six school choice, and that's, those classes are 24 to, one of the classes has 26. And then, grade three, we have 97 students, four school choice, and those classes range from 18 to 20 students. So, that brings the total to 488. And then, we have 17 DHA students, so the total student population's 505 students at JCS. We have 81 staff and 13 DHA staff, so. And then, as far as curriculum, we haven't really implemented a lot of new curricula, because we have done that last couple of years. There are some teachers who piloted Lucy Cawkins' writing program, which is complementing their reading program that we have adopted last couple of years. We have a new computer-based program called Reflex Math. Couple of teachers have gotten a grant, and they tried it out last year and really saw some good results with kids learning their math fast and becoming faster with that. Then, we have a couple of new assessments. One is called BAS, Assessment for Reading, that some teachers are piloting in second and third grade. And then, Mrs. Kiefer was able to receive a grant for piloting a pre-K screening program or tool, and so teachers are getting trained on that, and it's something that the state, I believe, is going to be adopting later on, so we're kind of steps ahead. We've also used the Social Emotional Screener for kindergarten this year, just to see if we could get more information before we place students in the classrooms. And we are continuing with the positive behavioral interventions and supports, the PBIS program. Staff got trained last year. We have three coaches that will work on supporting teachers and implementing that program, and it's a social emotional program. This year, we were able to get a computer program that actually tracks student reports, behaviors, what's happening, where is it happening, so we can collect some data and then come up with some lessons to teach students in areas that we might have some difficulties with student behavior, and also identifying some students who may need additional supports to make them successful. And I'm going to turn it over to our SBO, Daniella Boulay. She's going to talk a little bit about SBO. Is it her way?
Hi, I'm Daniella Boulay. I'm Secretary of the SPO, and we're off to a great start this year. We just had our Fall Festival, fun event for all the families, very successful. We have a few other events for this year coming up. We're going to have our Booster Thon in the spring, like we've done in the past, and we have a lot of new parents that are joining us this year. Our whole board is new, except for Laura is still our treasurer. And it's been exciting so far, everything we've been doing, and we have a great community, and we have great support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Right after the...
Yeah. Thank you for the updates. It's always nice to come back to the JCS. Spent a lot of time here, so it's always nice to come back.
This is the first year I don't have a kid at the JCS?
Really?
Their meetings go really quick now.
Any other questions or anything, Mrs. Bolton? No, okay. Thank you so much. Alright, and recognition of Eagle Scout, Ryan Carroll.
Ryan, come on up. So, Ryan's going to take the floor and introduce a little bit about himself and what he did in order to earn this very special recognition, as I think most of us know. And I want to thank Ms. Cohen, who made sure that we were able to reach out to the Carols. The family is here as well. So, sure, sure, go ahead. I'll do the other stuff afterwards.
I'm Ryan Carroll. I'm a Boy Scout from 212. I just went for my, I just did my Eagle project across all of the elementary schools, alright. And I got my idea from Adam Morrison, who I heard about his dream, and I thought it was really good, so I wanted to make it happen. So, at the, no, ah, sorry. At the YEL, I made like, I did a lot of landscaping behind the lobby, where I laid down a lot of like different plants to like make it more like attractive and welcoming, which I got from, donated like from, ah, sorry, local businesses donated to me. Then at the LG, I built a buddy bench, which I went to the LG, so I thought it was a really good idea, and like give back to the school. And it like fosters a center of inclusion in the schools and the system. And at other schools, well, I got those donated from other local businesses, too.
What's up, Dan?
At the...
Your phone!
The JCS, they had a buddy bench, but it wasn't really like opened up, so not a lot of people knew about it. So, I contacted one of my local former scouts' parent, who works at Sign Design, and I got some signs donated. I put those up at the JCS, where they have buddy bench designated now. And then, I put one up at the YEL, where they have one just built from the wood shop teacher at the high school.
I think it's kind of cool to not have, not only someone who took the idea from someone else, which I really liked, and the connection that we make about being an inclusion district, and really you taking it to a whole other level, you know, in terms of making each of our younger kids feel that regardless of our background and so on and so forth, that this is all about us, the kids, and being... So, I'd like to present you with the Citizenship Award from Norton Public Schools, awarded to Ryan Carroll for completion of Eagles Health Project to benefit the Norton Public Schools. Right, awesome. We'll send you a picture. How's that? Don't worry about it.
I'm going to take one more.
And one more after that. And one more, seriously, one more. If ideas come from someone else, that's okay. We appreciate it very much.
Just in the front.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So, Ryan, I just want to take a minute, and hopefully, I can say this without crying, because I always cry at things like this, but they all know it. I just want to thank you for doing what you did. It takes a lot of hard work, a lot of courage, to be able to do something like this, and you're going to help kids, no, maybe I couldn't do it. Not only now, but in the future. So, I just want to thank you for doing that.
Good job.
I'll pull myself together. Okay, next. Resolution in support of full funding for our public schools, Mrs. Shannon Taylor.
Ms. Taylor is the president, Ms. Taylor is the president of the Norton Teachers Association as of this year.
My MTA rep is here as well, Eric Power.
Yes, Eric, come on up.
Herschel, I'm going to let her go.
Eric is the lead negotiator for both the teachers and the fellow professionals coming representing the Mass Teachers Association.
I need a couple, two more copies, because I just wanted to, you guys, and just give you some information. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to support a joint resolution between the Norton Teachers Association and the school committee regarding increasing state funding for education and to fund our future in Norton as well as across the Commonwealth. We're chronically having conversations about funding, our student education, and we do a great job in Norton and have many strengths across the district, but we all know that we could do better. So, we could have more tech, more foreign language, more arts, lower class sizes. I know you guys just heard about the class sizes here at JCS, and I work here, and I was still kind of shocked at some of the numbers. And there's so many other things that we have, as a district, been fighting for over and over again in the past, and this funding would be able to give us those things that we keep going after. So, we all know what we want with best for the kids, and this is going to put us in a much better place. So, what we were presented with at the beginning of the year, from at our opening day ceremonies, Mary Jimmy and Max Page came. They are our MTA President and Vice President, and they handed me this check right here, not real, but a nice little understanding about if we can get the funding fixed. It's $590,500 that Norton would be getting every year from the state, from state funding. So, this would help us tremendously going forward. So, I wanted to give you guys one, so that you guys, when you have your meetings, you can think about that this is the number that Norton is missing out on right now, and if we can fix it.
Is it not real?
I promise you it's not. No.
She already tried to catch it.
I know. Do you have any questions about this, or where, you know, I know you guys, you guys have sat at these tables so many times, had so many conversations about funding, and this isn't a one-time thing. This is every year that what Norton would be getting, and think about what we'd be able to do for our students.
And just to back up what Shannon is saying, the other issue, is a train coming? Time to just feel like a train around here. One of the things that's really important that, as you know, in June, May, actually, this past year, the school committee voted the support for the foundation committee recommendations to actually be implemented with one of the school committees that signed on to that, about 150 school committees, I think, have. This resolution speaks even a little bit more specifically, coming not only through the MTA, but it's actually coming through a number of other sources, that these are the rough estimates of what the numbers would be, and we actually think it might be higher than what's here. So, I fully endorse this, because it's a continuation of, we were very close this past summer on getting the foundation budget finally moved in the right direction around two areas. One was special education costs, the other one was healthcare costs, and bringing them up to the inflation rate that has been missed for the last decade, or actually, two decades.
Yep.
So, I would urge you to consider adopting the resolution as supported by the MTA and the MTA. We would then, like we've done in the past, we would take your vote from tonight, if you decide to go that route, and in support of the MTA and the MTA, move it forward to our elected officials, who are going to be key voters in this elect, in this budget cycle, on consideration of actually implementing the foundation budget review committee recommendations.
So, I was just going to ask the timeline of this.
Yeah, so, it'll more than likely not be a supplemental budget. I think they'll probably have some type of supplemental budget this year, like they always do for something around December, January. It's also an election year, so usually, money flows a little bit quicker. But what I think is going to happen is there's going to be a big push in the FY '20 budget to see if we can bring this closer. I think what I'm hearing is, instead of a big step in one year or two years, I think they're looking at bringing this to that number, if you will, over years. So, in other words, instead of bringing in a billion dollars more, maybe it's going to be 350 this year, 500 the following year, 750 the year after. So, the number will actually be bigger, but it'll be over time, not in one chunk. Don't forget that the state coffers right now are up with money, but there's some, the biggest issue is they also want to take care of their rainy day account, number one, and then number two is this issue of Medicare coming out of DC that's a concern for the governors, because it could end up taking a huge chunk of some of those revenues. So, it's a little bit of that battle of what we're trying to establish. I think the key here is that we're really pushing that the state understand that healthcare costs, special education costs, transportation costs have actually gone up at a significant higher rate than, for example, salaries or other benefits. So, it's not necessarily taking and saying, well, let's put it into administrators and teachers' salaries. This is about really bringing money back to address issues that are important to the districts, which is different from place to place. Just imagine, this fiscal year had the $600,000 more than we have, at really no cost to the local taxpayers. I want to make sure that's important, that this isn't the $600,000 that's coming straight out of Norton. This is $600,000 that the foundation formula is not taking some statewide monies and bringing it back to the communities. And I would acknowledge that this is probably one of the smaller numbers in the area.
It absolutely is. If the Paul River was in the, towards 20 million.
Right.
I mean...
You bet for 43 million.
Yeah. So, $1,800 statewide, so.
But this is what we've been talking about, right, when we had Representative Pharaohs come last night.
This is, this is, let's vote yes on this when it's on the floor. Now, we recognize, just like you folks do, you know, that they either got to take them somewhere, or they actually have to implement and say, you know what, we're going to do less of this and more of that. There was supposed to be a question on the ballot, on what was called a millionaire's tax. That ballot was considered by the State Supreme Court to be invalid, because it specifically put money into two accounts, transportation and public education, and the Supreme Court basically ruled, Superior Court basically, Supreme Court, Mass Supreme Court, basically ruled that it needs to go to the general fund, and then the elected officials are elected for the purposes of distributing funds, not a ballot question. So, it was struck down, and it's not, it's not a ballot question for this year. There's only three. So, yes, this is what we would want to say to our elected officials, you know, if you decide to support it, in whatever means, my office can absolutely write a letter on behalf of the Chair, that the committee took a vote, this is the vote that we're supporting, and so on and so forth, because it's specific now. It's not just general money, at minimum, in our opinion.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this?
So, just a couple of comments. It's interesting, because as you mentioned, and as you know very well, for years, we've all been fighting for better funding, and sometimes we get very myopic, and we kind of tend to look at just our local funding. And in the reality, I think there's this perception that it's pretty much all we can really control anyways. But for years, we've been looking at local, and honestly, I think we've probably dropped the ball on state funding, whether it be because we're just too focused on one or we just kind of don't feel we can do much to stay all the way. This is absolutely phenomenal, couldn't support it more. My one concern, and I'll say this, is I always have my doubts when politicians say, we're going to implement this over time. That concerns...
Yeah, because all of a sudden, it rains, and money's going along with it.
Yeah. They, oh, we're putting in the rain, it's raining now. So, the one thing about this that I do have concerns about is, there's got to be the political will, and there's got to be the public pressure to make sure that if we're going to do it over three years, as Dr. Byatt said, that two years from now, they don't say, hey, no one's looking, we'll move this money somewhere else. That happens, you know. It's just the reality of the situation. And to your point, this money's got to come from somewhere. So, I would just encourage yourself, everybody, to stay on top of this and watch it as the years go by, because money moves pretty quickly and stays a lot, as we all know, so.
Yeah, I think keeping the pressure on and informing the community, you know, especially after the vote tonight, informing the community of what's going on, so if there's things that people can do, you know, just to support, I think that's going to be a huge component of it. And I agree with Dinese. I mean, it's been, it's been a rough couple of years, so I just want to thank you, Shannon, and everybody else in your group, for really kind of going after this, and you know, it's due. It really is, it's time, so thank you.
You guys have put so much time and effort into moving Norton Public Schools what it is, and we absolutely appreciate that, and this is our way of being able to do something. And my goal as a new President is to continue what Joe Spruill has done for years, is really make the community understand that what we're doing for our kids. So, I'm really excited to continue doing this.
Yeah, you guys have done a great job with getting the word out over the years, so it's just nice, it's nice to see.
So, if you would like, I'll read the resolution to enter into the record, and then somebody can motion in second, if that's okay with the committee. The resolution supported full funding for our public schools as presented by the President of the MTA, whereas free public schools available to all students without exception... Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by state constitution. And whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional need, needs. Whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully out of date for years. They are by underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services. And whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring Norton up to $590,500 in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to be closer to providing students with the education to which they are entitled to as residents of the Commonwealth. And whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state. Therefore, be resolved that the Norton School Committee urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for the Norton School Committee to support the resolution as raised.
So, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Joe, can you also follow up with a letter for that?
Yep.
That's great.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I think we should maybe, there wasn't enough. Oh, yeah. Okay, next district audits, Mr. Wells Food Service and Circuit Breaker.
So, we have two unplanned, non-annual audits that are occurring this year. First one is the National School Learning Program Administrative Review. It's an audit of our food service operations, pretty thorough audit. They have been visiting two schools at the time when they come in to do the audit. They have not scheduled it yet, but they have started to send us some pre-work to do. So, we expect that to come along pretty soon. The second one is our special education circuit breaker audit. This has been scheduled already for November 13th. They'll come in, they'll spend the day with us. Jean's staff is doing a great job of preparing everything in the heat for the audit. We expect that to go pretty smoothly.
Anything on that? Any else? No. Okay. Thank you. All right, plumbing bid next.
So, next is the plumbing bid. We had done a plumbing bid in the spring, had brought a contractor on-site to do the work and they were unable to actually accomplish the work that we were asking of them. We had a conference call with them and they were very clear that they had overextended themselves and were not able to actually service our contract. So, we've canceled that contract with them. We're back out on the street with a bid right now. We have a revised bid document that's available and that's going to be due on October 25th in the afternoon. And I expect we'll be soliciting a number of deters as well as getting to them what they request.
And do we have to wait for this, for the work at the LG?
Uh, no, we can, we don't have a plumber on, on hand right now. We can, we're, we're doing some work. We're spreading it out amongst a couple of different plumbers to make sure that we're not giving unfair advantage to anybody.
Okay.
And we're collecting some quotes for that to move forward.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay.
So, how bad is the leak right now that it's happening? I mean, we're, are we causing structural damage with it?
No. It's, what happens is you have basically going into the dirt underneath and it gets soaked up pretty well because so far so good, we're not freezing or anything. We can still have hot, hot water and hot heat in the building because it's not like pouring out, it's literally at the joints that it's coming out. So, the anticipation is that we will be shutting down the water, which means we're going to have to work around schedules and so on and so forth of the school day. And then we will bring that up towards the ceiling line and run it through that way.
Anything else?
And we, we did get, I'm sorry. We did get financial support from the, from the finance committee, the capital committee, the finance committee, the board of selectmen. And so, really Monday night, if, unless there's a big change Monday night, we'll have the money.
All right. Next ballot question three, Dr. Byatt.
Thank you so much. As you know, I serve on the Governor's Council, Governor's Commission on School Safety. I represent MASSS on it. It's been a project of mine to be a member of that group because of my work since 1992 as a teacher, as an advisor to them, what was called the Gay, Straight and Gay, Gay and Straight Alliance, which came out of the Bill Weld administration, the first administration to have it in the state. That's really grown both under Republican and Democrat governors. And as a commission member, I've, I've taken my role that it's about the safety of our students and our schools regardless of who they are as an individual. Valid question number three has some impacts on societal norms that I think are a concern for many of us. And I'm asking tonight that you join me in welcoming this Lisa Daly, who is one of our advisors specifically at the middle school. And through her, we were able to have some students who wanted to come forward and present their thoughts to you on this ballot question. And then I'll wrap up with my thoughts and what they would like to do. We also have with us, and I'll let Lisa make a formal introduction, a number of staff members. In this past summer, end of June, I actually started a luncheon, or actually a light dinner in the, in the afternoon with our GSA at the middle school where I got some pizza and waters and cookies and stuff. And we came together and I was formally introduced to the group and able to talk to them about what do they want me to take back to the Governor's Commission about the issues. And then, of course, this ballot question is, is, is part of that. So, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Byatt. As you said, I'm Lisa Daly, I'm a school adjustment counselor at Norton Middle School, and I'm the GSA advisor. Currently, that name has changed, so it stands for Gender and Sexuality Alliance. I would like the students I've brought, very brave students, brought to introduce themselves as well as the staff here that are supporting us.
Hi, I'm Matthew Foley.
I'm Erica Taylor.
Hi, I'm Maria Sivos.
Karen Jensen, I'm a sixth grade learning specialist.
Cynthia Brusonian, learning specialist, grade six.
Tricia George, school nurse.
Joe Smalley, eighth grade English.
Thank you. As we're talking, I'm just going to pass down our signed fire. Stand for acceptance, stand for quality, stand for love, no hate. And if anyone would like to take a pride bracelet or an awareness, acceptance, and safety zone sticker, please feel free. And now I'm going to hand it over to the students. And then I have a letter from a student that could not be here that he would like me to read.
So, what is question three? On Election Day, Massachusetts voters will face the first-ever statewide popular vote on protections for transgender people from discrimination. The referendum seeks to repeal our state law that protects transgender people from discrimination in public spaces, including restaurants, stores, and doctor offices. A yes vote on question three keeps the current law as good.
Why it is important to us. We're all human beings and we should not be discriminated against. All people in America should be treated fairly, respectfully, and with dignity. We all have basic human rights and recognizing is essential to building a positive community. Question three directly impacts students at Norton Public Schools who are transgender and family, friends, teachers, and community members who love them. Massachusetts has been a leader in LGBTQ+ rights and we want our state to continue to be a safe place that we can be proud of. All people should be able to be their best authentic selves ever lived.
Why we are bringing it to the school committee? We are asking the school committee to consider publicly supporting a yes vote on question three because as respected community leaders, people look up to you to understand these issues. We're asking you to send a message to the whole community that you value every student. We can't vote, but we're here to share our voices and make a difference, and we hope that you will too.
This is the letter from a student that could not be here tonight. Dear school committee, I know the GSA has discussed with you the importance of this question and what it means to them. I am writing to reinforce the significance of this repeal to me as a transgender individual who was top of the most Massachusetts to vote no on question three. I was assigned female at birth, but around age nine or 10, I began to question this identity. I cry too. Sorry. Okay. And came to the realization that though I had the normal girly-girl childhood, I was a boy. In the summers of 2017 and 2018, though mostly this past summer during my and family annual vacation down to North Carolina, I couldn't help the feeling of being unwanted or forced out of public bathrooms, men's rooms, or men's sections in certain stores. This led me to sitting idly in the middle seat of a 13-hour car ride, never using the bathroom once. The student said I'd be emotional, so that's why I didn't read it. It's too much. Okay. I gave in once we reached a CES in North Carolina, which had single-stall gendered bathrooms. This was my first experience using the men's room. Throughout the trips these past two summers with the bathroom bill that North Carolina has tried to pass previously, I began to notice that it wasn't only my anxiety causing me to be worried over being confronted in a public space, but rather that there was a group of people, a large group of people, pushing people like me away. My own family didn't quite grasp the problem that was, that was me not feeling safe using the men's room. Why don't you just use the women's, they said. My problem isn't being disallowed in the men's, but rather that if I went in there, I felt unsafe. But if I went in the women's, I made others feel unsafe, have glares or worried stares from the other people in there and risked being followed by an employee or a security guard. All of this is to say that I shouldn't need to feel unsafe, unwanted, or burdened in my own time. Ever since I've come out, I felt extremely lucky that I was born and raised in Massachusetts as we are very progressive with LGBTQ+ rights. Right, having this question on the ballot alone makes me question our acceptance of the transgender community. I hope hearing my story will help you make an informed decision come Election Day. Sincerely, A. Great Student.
That's pretty powerful. This is going to be a tough night for me because I'm going to cry yet again. Without like blubbering right now, I just want to say that I am incredibly proud of each and every one of you that have shown up here tonight. And it takes a lot of courage to stand up for yourselves and for others and to do what's right. And I just want you to know that we are very proud of you.
So...
I can't even speak to it, so go ahead.
It's all right, I got to, this is an issue, you know, being a person that, that it is who I am, I just want other kids to feel the same way about who they are regardless of who they are, really. I also want to tell you that our, our governor has come out on a yes vote on three in support of it. And all of the local elected, elected officials running for reelection, regardless if they're Republican or Democrat, have come out in favor of question three with a yes, a yes vote. And I just want to be clearly, you know, schools are not the traditional public place, but we face the public issues, right? We don't have necessarily people coming off the street to go use our bathroom. But within our schools, especially here in Norton, we don't have a very diversified student body. I think I can say that without being ridiculed. You know, we're 90% white as a student community. Our diversity has been our transgender youth, our gay youth, our lesbian youth, our questioning youth. They are our diversity as a community regardless of what people think that, and so, to have a lot of safe zones in our schools regardless of age, to sit across from parents who sit with me and we go through a process of who do we communicate with? Who do we tell the story to? Do we have your right to do so? It's, it's pretty difficult, you know? It's very emotional. There's been a lot of emotional times within the superintendent's conference room on this topic. And I understand that within society, there are some that are like, they're not sure. And I'll, I'll share a personal story. This summer was the first time that I walked into a unisex bathroom in Europe where my wife was in front of me, my daughter was behind me, and I was in the middle. And one went to one stall and one went to another stall. And it was different. I don't question that. But it made me feel like, and I probably shouldn't say this as a superintendent, but everybody who goes to a bathroom knows exactly what they're doing in a bathroom. I'll leave it at that. They're not there for anything else, you know? This question is, is a curveball question because the way that it's not being asked in the traditional way a ballot question would be asked, typically if you have a law and you don't want to change it, you would actually vote no, not yes. So, this is a very politically, you know, and I'll probably get in trouble, but that's okay. I think I have the support of the school committee. I'll probably get in trouble with somebody within the community or outside of the community. This question, in my opinion, is all about having our elected officials speak for the community, the state, by saying we need to protect all people of their civil rights, not just the ones that we feel comfortable with or uncomfortable with. You know, it wasn't too long ago, on a whole different issue, that this nation dealt with people of color in a way that many of us are horrified that it even happened. And people had to change, if you will, their perspective and find out what it meant. For me, and I'll be very clear, it's about the safety of the kids I'm responsible for. Period. End of story. And that's why I urge you to consider, as was asked of you specifically in Matt's comments to the group, to the, to the school committee. It is not typical for the school committee to come out and support ballot questions one way or the other, but we have done it in the past since I...
I was also contacted by Karen Giottrellis, our school psychologist, who really wanted to be here tonight, but had something come up and she asked that we vote yes on this. I just have to say too, I think that, you know, there can be a lot of hate in this world and sometimes I think that hate is a little bit louder than the love. So, I hope that by this vote tonight, that our Norton students feel the love because that's what they should feel in this town.
You could, you know, my, my job is to advise the committee. You could get some scrutiny as well as an elected board and that's, you know, that the question doesn't directly impact the schools in your role. But the fact of the matter is, if the school committee wants to, it can decide that it wants to vote on the NAFTA agreement. I mean, you're an elected board, you can do whatever the heck you want when you want to do it. I think this is an issue of making sure that our students are feeling that the adults who matter, who are elected, who are appointed, like I am, just stand behind and say, safety first, number one in their education, number two, for making sure that they feel that they can learn in school and don't have to worry about. You know, we've had zero incidents of this issue within our schools. And we have, as you know, at the middle school, right away, the, the unisex bathrooms upstairs and more to come. There'll be more of that happening. And, and so, you know, as advice to this committee, yes, you could face phone calls or scrutiny. I could, I could as well, I have in the past, when Obama, President Obama at the time was suggesting he was going to withhold funds from communities or states that didn't, I received a phone call and said, well, you're two years too late because the Acts of 2012 in Massachusetts required that a child at 14 or over, we don't even need parental consent. We just inform. And, you know, you might say, well, my goodness, you know, parent consent, I'm a parent as well, I get that. But it's about the safety of the student and where their perspective is, if not anyone else, so.
If I could just say one more thing, even though it's in public places, it would obviously affect the social and mental well-being of many students in our district.
If there's scrutiny, for me personally, call me, email me, I'll meet you anytime. Love to talk about it. So, any other?
Just lastly, before you, you decide on your action, it's really, really important that we recognize that any student involved with the GSA is a supporter, a person involved. They don't necessarily have to be gay, lesbian, questioning, transgender. They are a supporter of being there because it's their friends, it's their colleagues. And a lot of the time, there's a lot of stereotypes about who speaks for a group or who's up front and all. It's all about the sense of community and support, not about anything else. So, just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that.
We have many allies. Sorry. We have many allies.
Yes, allies. Thank you.
I just think if we paid more attention to children, we would probably learn a lot about empathy and compassion. And I think our, our kids are not bothered by this. I think it's really an adult issue. So, I think all of us here are here to support what's happening with our children in the schools, so.
I think one thing to mention is, like, as much as we're an elected board, this is way above being an elected official. And I, I've said this in the past, the people we represent, they can't even vote for us. So, as much as we're elected, please come at us with the scrutiny, that's fine. But this is our platform because this is who we support, these brave students coming up here and all of our students in our schools. So, if there's scrutiny, so be it. Yeah, I'm not really sure what the scrutiny would be at this point, to be honest with you. And I want to lead by saying, fair disclosure, Malia and I are distinctly related.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what the scrutiny would be at this point, to be honest with you. And I want to lead by saying, fair disclosure, Malia and I are distinctly related.
Unfortunately.
Thank God.
Malia repeated that, in case everybody couldn't hear that. Might want to wait till after the break.
Thank God for her mother.
I want to just kind of address this, and hear me out. I'm the father of two daughters, and when this first became an issue, not question three, this is not new, this is something that's been going on for a while. When it first became an issue, my knee-jerk reaction was, "No, I don't want that, I have two daughters." You know, and I have this concern for their sake. And I pride myself on being somebody who kind of thinks things through and really gets logical. And I found it almost ironic that safety was the issue. And I think that's kind of what the opponents now are using, using this cudgel of, "You have to keep women safe." And I don't understand that argument, and I've since evolved and come around to realize that there's absolutely no reason not to support this. The idea of safety in the bathrooms is borderline ludicrous. You know, the idea that someone who is going to go into a women's bathroom under the guise of, you know, dressing as a female, to commit a nefarious act, and the one thing that stops them is, "Well, you're not allowed to go in there." Is absolutely ridiculous. And I liken it to, you know, "You can't rob my house, because I have no trespassing clause." It doesn't make sense, it's foolhardy. So, there's not really a logical, good argument not to support this, other than you're just a small-minded bigot, quite frankly. So, I couldn't support it enough, I couldn't be prouder of my daughter for coming here and speaking. And second fairness, Michaela is also a family friend. And Matt, you seem awesome. Couldn't be more vocal about supporting this, I think it's a great idea. I know, right?
Stack for everybody.
Again, I pride myself on thinking things through, and there is no logical reason not to support this. There is...
Absolutely. So do we take...
You could take a...
Do we do it on a yes vote?
You could do a vote that you are supporting a yes vote on question three here in the ballot in the upcoming...
So is there a motion to support the yes vote on ballot three in the upcoming election?
So...
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hundred percent.
You may be formally one of the first school committees in the Commonwealth to actually vote on this question.
Good.
Thank you, Paul. And thank you for being here, and thank you to the staff for supporting me. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you for not making me feel bad about crying.
By the way, this is a perfect example of Lance's lead. I'm just going on record, Lance's lead, students coming to the fourth grade, which is a big, you know, core concept that we have down at the middle school, so thank you.
Thank you, nice job.
Charlie usually gets emotional in three minutes.
It's not instinctive.
That's when I cry.
That's when he cries.
Now I'm gonna cry about M-PAS. No.
Yeah, here's a good one.
All right. Mrs. O'Neil.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
One second, I'll get my phone. Was it something I sent?
I guess so. Not as dynamic as the bear thing.
Those are better. But I speak fast.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me here tonight to discuss our 2018 M-PAS results. As I do annually, I've come just to highlight some of our overarching scores, to discuss some of our strengths and weaknesses, and our next steps for moving teaching and learning forward for all of our students here in Norton. So, of course, this is conflicting, so I'm gonna have to use this... So, as you may remember me mentioning last year, we are now in the middle of two different assessments. Our students in grades three to eight are taking the Next Generation M-PAS assessment, where we're looking at four categories of exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting, and not meeting. Where our high school students and students in grade five and eight, taking a science exam, are still working under the legacy umbrella, where we're looking at advanced, proficient, major, and warrant. So unfortunately, we're still in that limbo phase between two tests. The 2019 administration will move all tests in all grade levels into this Next Generation format. So when I present to you next year, we will be talking about one assessment. That also means that this upcoming administration in the spring of 2019 will be online for all students at all grade levels. So that is something that Mrs. Winsber and I have already started working with our building principals for the administration and the tech support piece of that. Last Wednesday, the district sent home student reports to all of our families via mail. And I actually, my own daughters came in the mail today too, and it's the first time that, as a parent, I've received this little report card. It's very interesting to sit on the other side of the table and to see how your own child does, and to know that it's just one showcase of the learning that they do each day in school. So this is what the parent report card looks like. It shows the different levels of achievement for students, and it will show on each individual student report where your child fell. It also goes into even more detail when it comes to particular question types or the actual questions that your child got wrong. Just show you the questions, it will just show the content or the standard that maybe they struggled with. So it actually gives a lot more information to students and families than they ever received in the past, which is, was actually very nice to see those things that my own daughter struggled on. So, the first thing I'm going to talk to you about is the accountability levels. This year is the very first year of a new accountability system for the state and for our schools. And it looked at student achievement data in math and ELA and science. It also looked at student growth data, which is something that we've always looked at in the areas of math and ELA. But for the first time, they've added a few new categories. One is the performance of our English language learner students. And for many communities across the Commonwealth, that's a large number of their students, so it's a huge impact. For Norton, it's not as great of an impact, we have a smaller population. They also looked at chronic absenteeism. And they define chronic absenteeism as 10% or more of missing school days. So for example, a student that's enrolled for 180 school days, if they miss 18 or more, they are considered chronically absent. And as we go through our data, we found that the absenteeism was one of our biggest challenges at all five of our schools. So that's something that we are really, really looking at as a leadership team, and something that we've discussed, how are we going to be working with families to reiterate the importance of children being in school every single day? Now, if a child moves in halfway throughout the year, they've only been here for 80 days, they're considered chronically absent after eight of those days, so it's 10%. The other components that they've added at the high school level include advanced coursework. So previously, we only looked at student growth and achievement for our ninth and 10th graders who were taking an assessment, but now we're looking at the coursework that our 11th and 12th graders are using. So even though they may have already passed M-PAS, the coursework is still impacting our accountability levels. The other piece that they're looking at is high school completion, looking at both four-year and five-year graduation rates, as well as our dropout rate, and putting that all into one formula as a component of accountability. So Norton as a district, I apologize, this is very small for our audience. We are considered a district that's partially meeting our targets, as I mentioned earlier. I know Link's not here, so I'm gonna make it really small for you.
I can say it's like Lincoln's small.
You gotta keep him alive in your heart just a little bit, right? So we are partially meeting our targets, and we found that the areas we were having the most difficulty were those chronic absenteeisms, and then in some of our subgroup populations that we had some difficulty, especially at the middle school, meeting those targets. But we do not require any assistance from the state, which is always a fantastic thing to focus on. And then all of our, all five of our schools fell into that same category. And of course, the strengths in areas of growth for all five of our schools are a little bit different based on the student population, based on the curriculum, but at this point, no one is requiring any interventions. Now, I was asked to shorten my presentation, because usually I can stand up here with you all for at least an hour and discuss the intricacies of our M-PAS data. So I just have some general overviews for you, just to kind of show, especially in grades three through eight, where we are. So, this is just a quick overview of all of our ELA scores, and I separated it into the four categories for you. So that way you can see the percentage of students that were either exceeding or meeting. And that's where we really want to see our students, either exceeding the expectations or meeting the expectations. Now, partially meeting, we have a lot of students that are right on that path between partially meeting and meeting the expectations. And that is something that we're looking at at this grade level and at the student level, to really see how we can take those students and move them to that next level. And then, there is this percentage at each level of students that are not yet meeting the expectations at the grade level. And now, I also want to remind the committee and our audience, that doesn't include all of our students. We have very, very few students across the district that participate in an alternative M-PAS exam, which is something that's more of a portfolio type. It's typically about 1% of our students, 1% to 2% of our students district-wide. So this really is all of our students. And I know that, you know, Mrs. Sullivan's office and our team chairs and the building principals, we really encourage all of our students to take the assessment to show what you're able to do. So that is the results for the grade level. One of the concerns that I personally had was in grade seven, looking at the number of students that were either exceeding or meeting the expectation. I found that to be a very low number for our seventh graders. And when you do a little bit of a deeper dive, and you look at the state data, you look at our surrounding communities, it's pretty much in line with the rest of the communities that were around us, which is surprising. So there is definitely something there, something that we're looking at our curriculum piece as well. But it's interesting to see that that one particular grade level seems to be a challenge across the state.
So, not realizing that, and I'll preface this, as I think I do every year, by saying I think M-PAS is an enormous waste of your time. But with not a ton of data, and kind of just looking at this, it almost seems to me like there's a sense that you can somewhat see the seventh grade dip coming in the sixth grade. There seems to be an outlier number of not meeting. You know, it goes from 3% to 7%, it more than doubles. And then obviously, it goes to 10% in the seventh grade. So I'm curious what your thoughts are on that. Because it does seem like it's starting to materialize in the sixth grade, carries through to the seventh, and then it seems to mitigate back down into the eighth. And then, you and I have talked about it from the 10th grade.
Yes. I think that we, so, just to clarify for our audience, this is not cohort data. So it's not, we're not taking one group of students and following them from year to year. This is straight grade level data. So typically, it's pretty common to see a decrease in student performance at the middle school level. And that's something that our middle school has always done very, very well. The academics are a little bit more challenging, it's more critical thinking, it's content-focused in many ways.
It's not a bad dip in the sixth, you wouldn't even notice it in the seventh.
Correct. Seventh is pretty extreme. However, one of the things that's really interesting about this new assessment is we really only have two years of data for us to work with. So it's really hard to see the patterns. Whereas in the past, we've had, you know, five or six years of data all to look at at the same time. We could follow cohorts, we could look at particular grade levels. We could really, like, get down into the actual standards and strands of curriculum. But because the state is still trying to figure out the new assessment, and the districts are still trying to kind of figure out what to expect, it becomes much more challenging to really make predictions about what we might see from one year to the next. And they also...
The other thing I think is really important is that every year, we also talk about fourth grade. When you look at this data here, the story isn't the same anymore.
Yeah, well, it's...
And again, we're not comparing.
It is in math.
It is in math, it is in math.
But it's not as bad as it used to be.
Exactly, that's number one, it's much closer in math, and it's at or above in ELA in both, in fourth. So, you know, and when we have some other data points, I think that Jen's gonna talk about, that shows some of the curriculum issues that we need to address.
Just as some history for the new leaders, there was a time when the fourth grade, the movement from third to fourth grade was...
Declined?
It was notably, the scores notably declined.
If we followed the cohort. In other words, if we took the kids in third grade, we took the test, and then they took it in fourth grade. And when we looked at it in fifth grade, and looked at the comparison, we'd see a drop.
We're not seeing that much now.
And that, so, we've spent a lot of time really focusing on the transition between third and fourth grade. We've spent a lot of time focusing on the curriculum piece, the support piece for our students, the interventions. We spend a lot of time, especially at those younger, third, fourth, and fifth grade. So I think that's a good part of it. I think there's just been changes over the years that have made, have impacted those results as well. The other thing that I was going to mention was that the state is not really releasing a lot of item-level data when it comes to the assessment. So, we can take a look at student scores, we can take a look at questions that may have been a challenge for the entire classroom or the entire grade level, but unless you can really look at what students saw, it's kind of challenging to see where they may have gone wrong. Was it a simple mistake, was it a misleading question? Did they put two answers there that may have been pretty close? So, that makes that piece challenging.
Did our curriculum not perfectly align?
Exactly.
In other words, we're not teaching to a test, what we're teaching to is the curriculum framework that we take. And if there were four questions asked on a certain topic, and it was taught in November or December and not really even reviewed, it could be that the students, or it wasn't there. We have in one content area, science, where we see that we need to really do some deep dives into our curriculum more than anything else.
And I will say on a personal level, my younger daughter, her ELA was phenomenal, and her math was, she was ingested 100% meaning. And when you look at the breakdown of types of things, she did really well, except for one thing. And I asked her about it, and she said, "Yeah, we didn't learn it."
Was it geometry? Because that was the one that my daughter didn't get.
It was fractions.
Okay.
So...
And she's in fourth grade, so that was her first...
She's in fourth grade now, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So it is, it is very interesting as a parent to look at that piece of it as well. But we're doing the same thing at the school and national level. So this, I gave you a very similar results by grade level for math. As you mentioned, fourth grade in math was not, was not great. 38%, you go either exceeding or meeting. But then, sixth grade, 59%. So that was, it's interesting when you look at it from year to year. It is really challenging to make those predictions. Science results, as I mentioned earlier, science is the one content area that is still in the old assessment. That's why the data looks a little bit different, the results a little bit different, that we're using different language. And overall, fifth grade was definitely outperformed eighth grade. Eighth grade, we had Mr. Hayward and I sat down, and we looked at the standards report. And there was one particular area where we were 17 points below the state average. And he and I both just kind of looked at each other like, "Oh my, like, what happened, what happened?" And really, for us, that's a curriculum issue. One of the things for us to remember about science is it's a grade span test. So students in grade five are assessed on curriculum from grades three through five. Students in grade eight are assessed on curriculum from grades six through eight. So, those fifth grade teachers and the eighth grade teachers have a lot of pressure on them. Because not only do they need to get through their grade level content, they also have to review the two previous grade levels. Because, I don't know about the rest of you, but if I learned something in sixth grade and was expected to be tested on in an eighth grade, I might have a challenging time with that as well. So, right now at our middle school, we're actually doing a pilot of a new science program, and that is something that during the budget process, I will be coming forward to the committee as a priority for us at Norton Middle School.
I think historically, I don't actually remember on fifth and eighth specifically, but I think historically, we actually do considerably better than the state in science.
Yes.
These scores are pretty on par with, for fifth and eighth grade with the rest of the state. You'll see where we outperform is in 10th grade. We're a very, very strong science program at our middle school.
That's the score, I don't know if that's one I have a really kind of written down as well, but it's...
The other thing for us to be aware of is that the science standards have gone through a change over the last several years, so the assessment has changed from year to year. In 2017, they were assessed only on old standards. In 2018, they were assessed on a combination of old and new standards. And then this spring, they'll be assessed just on the 2016 version of the standards. So it's also a little bit of a moving target from year to year, so that makes it always interesting for us. I always like to share our 10th grade results with you. And thank you to Dennis for pointing out to me that it was not the class of 2021. He was like, "I just don't understand what you're telling me, that's because I'm wrong, I made a mistake." So the class of 2020 is our current junior class, and they took the, their... And they took the, their last MCAS assessments last spring. And for us, this is where we always talk about the end product of more in public schools and how our students really do perform well if they stick with us. So for ELA, we had 71% of our 10th graders that were considered advanced and 25% that were considered proficient, which I think those are great, great scores. Definitely puts us above a lot of surrounding communities, well above the state average, which is where we live today. In math, 63% of our 10th graders were considered advanced and 24% considered proficient. And then science, 42% considered advanced and 45% considered proficient. And that 87% is well above the state average, well above many of the communities in our area. Because it's a very strong science program at our high school. We have some of our, this includes the ninth grade students that take the bio-MCAS as freshmen because they're in that enhanced program. And it also includes our tech graders that take it in part of their regular coursework. So as you can imagine, we're doing a lot of work around this data. At each of our schools and at every grade level, we do really deep building-based data exploration where we look at the standards. We looked, we look at the item analysis where we can. We look at the alignment of our grade level curriculum in comparison to the scores. And then we also look at our individual student performance. Is what we're seeing from our students in the classroom and on our local assessments comparable with what they're doing on the state assessment? And how can we use predictors in our own assessments to maybe see where our students might end up at the end of the year? At the district level, we take a look at themes across grade levels and grade stands. Take a look at the continuation of curriculum. Are we missing something? Is that particular strand in science something that maybe is just placed in the wrong place? Or is it something that we're missing totally? And then we also look, take a look at the resources that we have. How can we put high-quality resources into the hands of our teachers and students to better support this work? A few of the things that we've already done or will be doing in the near future at the elementary level. We actually reallocated that elementary math specialist position that we had. Mrs. Dietz was a, was a, only at the Yale School in the past. And she was a point six position. With some Title I funds, I was able to increase her position, I used a little bit of Title I money, a little bit of 2A money, which is a professional development grant, and increased her to a full-time position. So now she used, spends two days of her week here at JCP, two days of her week at LGN, and then the fifth day she is at the Yale School. And her primary goal is really supporting teachers, not so much as supporting students. So going into classrooms, modeling lessons, demonstrating what math talks look like, what happened. Encouraging teachers and supporting them and setting up guided analysis in their classroom. Working with grade levels on data and creating interventions for students. We felt that she would be able to really impact more students in this model than she would be able to just working with those students that maybe needed support on her own. So we're really, really excited for this change and we're really excited to see how this data looks at the end of the year. We're also enhancing our K-3 intervention model. In the past, we have done more classroom-based interventions instead of grade level focused. And we're also made a shift in our Title I program. In the past, Title I has been working with specific students in a targeted intervention model. And this year, we've moved to a school-wide model. And that was in part of an increase to our low-income percentage across the district. We were able to, now the Title I teachers are able to work with all students across the school. So every student becomes a Title I student. And it allows a lot more fluidity in intervention groups, supporting students where they're needed. And it creates more of an all-hands-on-deck approach to the intervention process. So that's something that we're really excited about. And then we're also really focusing on student attendance at the elementary level. The Yale School was probably our highest-performing school during this administration. The one thing that held them back was the chronic absenteeism. And I think that perhaps if that had not been such an issue for them, we may have seen them as a school designation. So that's something...
And that's really, really important because that's not something that we saw as the studio was going on. It's one of those things when you look back now, you say, "Wow, 18 days missed of school or more, 10%." Or if it's a new student from the day they start, if they enroll. So it's an interesting fact that we need to, I met with the principal and said that we need to implement some practices that go just beyond a letter that gets sent home after five consecutive days. We want phone calls, we want adults to come into the room, into the school and let's talk about helping them.
And I think it's also the importance of parent outreach and telling parents and communicating with them about how important it is for students to be in school every day. At the secondary level, we're really looking at enhancing our science resources. As I mentioned, we're conducting the pilot at the middle school right now. We're looking at ways to put more current resources that are really aligned to these new standards. We're also looking at strengthening the alignment of our curriculum in sixth through 12. This is obviously a challenge as the academic coordinators are solely at the high school this year. So this is something that we're going to be trying, that I'm going to try to be leading in partnership with the academic coordinators at the high school, but also meeting bi-monthly with the, with the academic teams at the middle school. It's really, really important, we're going to be doing a science summit with grades six, seven, and eight to really dive deep into their curriculum, into their resources. And then we're also looking at focused interventions and supports for students. Not just at the elementary level, but really focusing, using that ice lock in a more creative way to provide interventions for students. And that is that. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
It's a guess, you always have a comment.
That was way shorter than it's ever been.
For something that I have absolutely no use for at all, I have a lot of comments about it. But this is actually a productive comment for the beginning. While I think that you can look at individual student performance and possibly use that as, as the, you know, denotation of a red flag per se, I wouldn't, and obviously this is, you're in Joe's call. I wouldn't spend a ton of time adopting my curriculum to the scores of this test. Unless you think that that is what you should be doing from a curriculum standpoint, I wouldn't let this test dictate to you how you write your curriculum. This, this test is useless, it's useless. It's absolutely useless.
One of the things that I think Joe and I always tried to communicate with staff and to communicate with our families, especially when we write the parent letter that goes home. For us, MCAS is one assessment.
No, it's not, it's not even a one.
It's not to be all an end-all.
It's garbage.
So it's interesting because we have a new commissioner as well, for those people who don't know. And he, you know, he talks about the importance of, testing is important, accountability is important. Yes, it absolutely is. But there are so many more valuable things that we do here in district.
Absolutely. I represent a grade, that's my point.
Yes.
My point is, this, this should not be the dictator of our curriculum, in any way, shape, or form. In any way, shape, or form. They're clearly dumbing the test out in the 10th grade. So it's unlikely that our kids are going to fail.
You don't think they're not really, really smart?
I mean, we had this conversation.
Really what they're doing is smart.
What's the correlation between a grade, MCAS score, and going to a four-year school, including an Ivy school?
Nothing, nothing.
Well, because we don't report MCAS data to colleges.
We don't, and the colleges don't ask. And, but the question is, it's held as an accountability. And don't forget, you know, if you have a subgroup, all of a sudden now you're low performing. And then the next thing is, not only is your school low performing, but the entire district is considered low performing. And their formula that they have for accountability is under some significant scrutiny because it looks at...
Even by the commissioner.
Even by the commissioner. Because it, it's an "I gotcha" formula. You know, it's not about, you know, looking at what students need. And I think what's really great about us is, we want our curriculum to be strong, but we don't want to take away from a strong curriculum because of one test. And a perfect example of that is, if we have really strong writing taking place, but there isn't a whole lot of writing on a test, I don't know about you, but I'm going to, I'm going to continue to push the writing over, you know, a multi-step, multiple-question level.
Absolutely.
I think one area where perhaps the assessment is a good indicator of a curriculum would be that one, that the area of science where you're 17 points below. Do we totally miss that? Where is that in our curriculum? Is it something that students need to have as prerequisite for their high school courses? And if so, we're missing the boat on that piece.
I think from a more personal perspective, I think that if we wanted to put energy that really benefited children, that we should be spending all of this time and sort of conversation and money on helping our high school sort of sophomore, juniors, and seniors do amazingly well on their sort of college tests. So whether they choose to do the ACTs or to do, you know, whatever, but, or the SATs or... That actually means something, right? Because that's going to determine, and for a lot of our students, whether or not they get into their college of choice. None of this matters to them necessarily. And I do have to say that there is this year, an invitation for our high school students to do a free SAT prep class or prep session. So I think there's five sessions that are going to be offered for free. But, you know, I mean, if we really want to actually make this beneficial to our, to our students, that's maybe where we should be thinking of. And I'm not suggesting that this isn't important, but I don't really think that kind of math in sixth grade means anything when we have juniors taking an SAT sort of, to give them their math score that might get them into the college of their choice.
But just to be devil's advocate for one second, like Jen said, if you've got, if you see a glaring thing of that many points off, then that is something that we need to look at. And let's just look at, look at it as a guide, not, not anything that is on the front burner of the stove, but at least something that you can say, "Oh, hold on, this is a chunk here."
So this is the, this is the one time, this science is the one time in my, whatever it is, 10-year...
Right, that's been...
No, we've had, we've always been fine. And that's the only reason I say I would not use this as a curriculum.
Mr. Hayward and I were both shocked.
But you do have to look into it to see how that applied.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
In that way. I would only caution that, to go back to what our new commissioner told us, that testing does have a place in schools and that accountability does have a place.
This is full accountability, this is full accountability, it's not real accountability. Let's, let's be honest about it. It's not.
However, if we are a district that needs support from the state, the conversations that we're going to be having are going to be very, very different. So I would love to see us continue to do well and to, to grow in the areas that we need to grow because we already do an awful lot of jumping through hoops when it comes to state initiatives and mandates. I can only begin to imagine what that would look like at that next level.
Yeah, I, I hear, and... I'm just saying, don't let it keep you up in the night.
Oh, don't worry, it doesn't. I have plenty of other things that keep you up at night.
We have a question from the audience, even though we know you, if you wouldn't mind just standing and stating it.
Sure. I'm Tim from Village Way. I have no comment on whether it should change the curriculum or not, but just for people to be aware, it's either the songist for the Abigail Adams College Scholarship that MCAS scores affect. So just take that one tiny little piece into people's consideration. So when you look, so when you look at the Abigail Adams student scoring, being in the 25 percentile of their class of scoring, and proficient, advanced, or whatever category they're going to call it now, I guess it's going to be the upper two, at least having one that exceeds. There's money behind that, which at the state undergrad system, both four-year and two-year, brings roughly $1,000 to $1,500.
So the requirement is top 25% of your class.
Plus.
Advanced or proficient.
In one of the two, on, on the two, right.
There were, by definition, there will always be a top 25% of your class. And almost everybody is advanced and proficient. So there's, there is no, there is literally no downside.
I think, I think the gentleman's comment simply speaks to, let's, let's make sure that kids are working hard because there could be a financial benefit to them if they're applying to something like that. I don't think it necessarily means anything, and I'll defer to, to the first comments. But I, I do think something that's important. And one of the things that I've always done when I was a coordinator, when I was a principal and a superintendent is, as Jen knows, because she is the one that usually prits them off for me because I can't stand being behind the computer for this and it's usually at home with my feet up in the air. You have to look at your results from the perspective of where were we compared to everybody else? Simply because it does and will show you a glitch, a hiccup, whatever we want to call it in your curriculum. It will. If everybody's at 72 and you're at 22, you have a curriculum glitch of either when you taught it, how you taught it, or it wasn't even there. And a perfect example is the comment you made earlier about your daughter in math with one question, one standard, where she's like, "Dad, I didn't even see that." That's a curriculum glitch. Now, we also decide that if you have 36 standards to teach in 10 months, you can't teach all 36 things correct. And the perfect example I use all the time, as Jen knows, is the writing one in the ELA. I want to see writing every day at the highest level. But, you know, the, the amount of writing is still somewhat limited that our students are doing in comparison to, you know, the, especially with the old test, the next-generation test is taking it to another level. But even then, the writing is, you know, in some ways, it's open response, short answer responses, number one. But number two, that's not what they're being asked to do. You know, I am a decent writer, I wish I had spent more time as a student writer. Because I think, you know, it's, it's never been, you know, I have a tendency to write like I speak. Just let it go.
Are you, are you just, are you? The idea of the, the whole, she hadn't learned fractions yet. It's only a glitch if we never teach it.
Right.
Exactly.
It's not a glitch if we haven't taught it yet. That's my, my only comment is, I wouldn't let this dictate your curriculum. That's all I'm saying. If, if your curriculum is, "We're not going to teach addition," then yeah, you want to rethink that. But if we decide to do things differently and it's someone that we work for, honestly, my, my trust, my faith lies in you guys, not in MCAS. It's as simple as that.
And it comes. I mean, I think that that, it comes and it's obvious that it comes because in 10th grade, our students are doing very well regardless of how they did, so.
I just have two comments too. I think that it's one thing for administrators and teachers to kind of have some of this knowledge and where they're going with it, but I think it's another thing to make sure that our kids aren't feeling the pressure. Because I know when my kids were in their younger grades, it was a tremendous amount of pressure and it caused a lot of anxiety for one test.
Yes.
I think that this test should be considered the same as other tests. You go in, you, you know, you do your best. Yeah, you do your best. And I think that it's very important, especially with the social-emotional piece, to, you know, really look out for our kids and have them understand, this is just one test. This is not a picture of who you are. Because I agree with Dinesh on this, if I had to take MCAS, I'd still be in high school.
My kids know, so kids...
And then I just, I just want, it's one other, sorry, one other comment I just want to make, and you and I talked about it earlier. Of course, when the MCAS results come out, there's a lot of chatter about it. And I know that one of the criteria for advanced clap courses in the middle school is the MCAS? Where you place on the MCAS along with the...
It's a component. So it's, you know, it's a placement assessment, it's a report card, it's teacher recommendation. MCAS plays a component in it, but it's not the only factor.
So do we even have to have that as a component? Because I can tell you, I, you know, I, and I probably shouldn't even say this on camera because my kids would kill me, but my kids have all As and Bs and yet their MCAS scores don't really reflect how they do in school. So should that be a component for an advanced course?
So as I always say, the argument is not that test. The argument is the big picture of everything else that the child's doing, to me. Because there is no correlation. I can't, I can't Google studies about the correlation. What I can say is that it is a test that I do think kids have anxiety about. You've heard my personal story as well. But more importantly, what we're grading our students on is a lot of things, not a question type on the test. Again, if we have a curriculum glitch, we should look at it. Should it be a component? I think the assistant superintendent will tell you that I've been saying for a long time that it should not be a component.
Yeah, I don't think it should be either.
And she knows that, but, but I also defer to my people that are in the trenches in her office for these types of decisions simply because that's just a, maybe it's more of a philosophical stance. What it does is it creates a list, that's what it does. Here's a list, there is a list. Then another list comes out with report card. And another list comes out with teacher recommendation. Then another list, then of that list is, "Would you like to take the test?" You know? And I can tell you, as a parent, I opted out to take the test. To me, it's, we're in middle school, we're enjoying, we're going to enjoy middle school. We're going to have fun in middle school. We're going to bust ourselves in middle school every day and do our homework and do well, but I'm not sure I need the added pressure. That's me.
So you opted out?
I can opt out.
No, 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 no.
Not of the MCAS, not of the MCAS. No, no, not of the MCAS, but as a family should, no. Not of the, not of the MCAS, I would never do that to you. But I did, I did, I did not, did not want to see the positive of having to take an assessment to get into a honors class. I just didn't see it.
So I, yeah, I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, very clear. Not, not the MCAS.
But Jen, is that something that we can discuss going forward?
I think that is certainly something that we can discuss. The one thing that I just want us to be cautious of, yes, it is only a test. But I think the more that we downplay its role in our schools, the less people care. And I think that in some of our buildings, you can see a trend where performance is continuing to go down. And I wonder if it's an attitude about testing? I wonder if it's an attitude of... I wonder if it's an attitude about testing. I wonder if it's an attitude of, of belief about the, the role that MCAS has in our schools. I told my own daughter, she was taking it last, yasher for the first time in third grade, I don't care how well you do. You go to school, you try your best, and if you can come home and tell me that you did your best, then I'm happy. I, I fear that the pendulum might swing a little bit too far. I think it's, it's finding that balance. I really, really do.
Right. And it's hard when parents are saying that. I say that myself to my kids. I think it's hard because kids go in and they're like, eh, you know, Mom, Dad just said, do your best, that's fine. I just think looking at advanced course, courses, it's just something to look at. Do we really need that MCAS component in that? You know?
Well, you know what? Let me, for the sake of argument, our ACT scores are up, our SAT scores are up, our college placement for four years is up, our placement for college is up. End of story for me.
And that's interesting, because it's kind of the heels of Jen saying that there seems to be this, this mode to going to less interest in the test.
Right.
So there's no carry. I actually say it's there inversely correlated.
The issue becomes, the issue becomes, are we having dialogue about rigor and relevance within our coursework? Of where if our SEI, if our rigor and relevance is at the level it should be, our score should also be there. If they're not, then maybe we have to look at these 17% gaps and say, okay, well, maybe the rigor wasn't there for teaching of fractions? I'm just building that out. Or we missed a curriculum piece on a certain lab type in science? Or that's what I think we should muster with it. And then turn to the professionals and say, there is an expectation that this, you know, they're used to, we got into this MCAS thing. Let's not forget this, as a former teacher, we got into this MCAS thing because we had no correlation whatsoever within our public schools as one. I mean, if I didn't wanna teach World War II as a social studies teacher, I just didn't teach World War II. Finally, we all got together, you know, and, and look, social studies, I mean, we're moving to civics. Social studies is still, I mean, you could, I guess you could eliminate social studies tomorrow because you don't even have a test in it.
There is a test coming allegedly.
Allegedly, allegedly. Because last time, we couldn't come to the political realization of what the test should be. Should it be American perspective, or European perspective, or a global perspective? We, we, I was on, on those committees as a teacher back when.
My guess is that it'll be civics focused.
Yeah, it's civics focused because, I don't know, we wanna make sure that kids know the Constitution. You know what? Give every kid a, an American citizenship test, like I had to take to become a citizen. Tech question test. Give them that test. Let's, let's see if they can pass that. Who's your senator? Who's your representative? What kind of town, what kind of government do you have locally? Or other such questions that every single one of my families had to take in order to become a citizen. Just go back to the basics. Act, you know, we wanna create activists? Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we do. We wanna create people like you folks who wanna become involved in the school, not necessarily elected, but that's, I'm rambling. Let me just turn.
Yeah, can we just, can we add that to a future agenda?
Yes.
Just to discuss the, okay. All right, thank you.
Be happy to.
So, so I think, I think as much as we're all experts in this field, either as parents, as school board members who have gone through this, as an educator myself, let's turn to the experts who took the test for, for maybe a minute each. So Caroline and Cooper, tell me, what are you thinking about MCAS?
We actually just had a discussion. We're in the same English class. And our, what was supposed to be our opening discussion turned into an entire class theory devoted to what is the, like, good parts behind testing. And the general idea for everyone in our class was that it's really difficult for us to just have that sort of standard that we have to fit ourselves into. I mean, it's a different test for every sort of thing. For example, when I took honors bio, I studied how to answer MCAS questions. And I took AP bio last year, I studied how to answer AP questions. And it's, you're almost working to fit into the boxes instead of just showing like your knowledge of, like, you should be learning to learn not to succeed on a test. But again, I mean, there are, you need to have a way to measure. You can't just say, oh, I don't know.
They took the O's.
Like, learning is kind of subjective in whether or not you know the material and kind of formatting that in a certain way, just, just to make it easy for everybody to figure out who knows what, is, you know, is positive. But I think the stigma around MCAS as standardized testing is a bit much. From, I remember as a, you know, from a young age, back in third grade, it was just, you know, MCAS, 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 this is, you know, really important, you gotta really prep for it. And, you know, if you don't do well, it won't reflect on me as a teacher. And it's, you know, you will do good. And, you know, and I especially just despise the English MCAS because of the long answer essays and how they're just like, oh, you gotta do introduction, three, three body paragraphs and conclusion. And that is the only way you're ever going to learn to write until basically high school. Where then those teachers can be like, oh, no, you're actually, when you're writing an essay, you don't have to stick to five paragraphs. You can write however you want, as long as the material is good. And I'm just like, why, why didn't I learn this earlier? Why can't, you know, but.
And sometimes that causes you to freeze up in a test.
Yeah.
When you're, I, because I know for me, the way that I take a test, if I'm told something, I get so panicky that I freeze up. And I can't, I just can't do it. But put me in a practical situation, I mean, that's, that's really how I get through college. I did much better on practical situations. So I get it. I get what both of you are saying and appreciate your, your opinion on it.
Thanks for putting, for putting you on the spot. Thank you.
And this might be going off topic, and it might be a conversation for another night, but it just made me think when I was listening to both of you, Caroline and Cooper, about final exams. So I'm just going to ask that that goes on for discussion as well. Because I think if we have students who are in honors classes, or even college level classes, who are literally getting As throughout the entire year, or whatever the, the sort of grade designation is that we believe appropriate, I'm not exactly sure studying content for the final exam is 100% necessary. Again, a personal opinion, but definitely something that students have talked about, definitely something that across sort of social emotional learning, there's conversations happening. So maybe something for a future agenda topic.
We have, we have a few committees that we're exploring this year as a jump off from some of the work the SEL committee did. One of them is a homework committee. We're looking at homework in K-5 and in 6 to 12. It was a much more popular committee in the 6 to 12 world than it was in K-5. We're also going to be looking at school start times, and then we're also going to be looking at grading practices.
So do you have some students in the, on these committees as well?
So students will be invited to join us as well. We're just getting started on the homework committee, probably the end of November.
Okay, that's great.
Probably before Thanksgiving, and then we'll start very soon thereafter with the school.
I think it'd be really intriguing to watch the, the amount of sort of motivation and dedication to content and to learning throughout the year, to homework, to tests, to papers, to research, whatever it may be, if they know at the end, if they achieve a grade of something or better, that they are opted out of the final exam. I think it would be really amazing to see if, if the motivation is enough to really get children more engaged, or our students more engaged. So.
At very least, the final exam couldn't drop your grade more than certain, it should weigh so much weight that it can drop you fully.
The, the idea that, for my 27 years in public education, and the last, since, since '03, the MCAS test became a graduation requirement with the class of '03, that we don't like the state tests, but we're still administering mid-year and final exams is a very traditional model. And I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be mid-year and final exams. What I'm suggesting is that those should have a variety of target areas for students to be part of. So you could be in ELA and create a script for a play. That's gonna take you a lot longer than a 90-minute task. You could write a story. You could create advertisements. You could, there's so many different things that you can do within the core subject areas and outside of those areas. One of them is, you may not like this, Caroline, specifically because we've had sidebars about, about testing, mid-year and finals. I'm not a big fan of these half-days. You know, four days of half-days because we're studying. Really? Really? Okay. Guess what? I'm visiting every, I'm coming over for sure.
I go home and take a nap.
I'm coming, I'm coming over with all your friends, and I'm gonna, I'll bring dinner, and I wanna see you guys study. I'll even help.
Too far, I was like, I'll home and I nap. And then I study.
But the extremes here is that we're all motivated, to use your word, Caroline, we're all motivated in some way, shape, or form. Right? When I was a student in undergrad, taking a history test motivated me, or a history assignment, because I really liked it. Wasn't necessarily true in other areas. Now, in high school, we can't just do that because we're trying to make them well-rounded academic students who can go into a career area, which is an area that Caroline and I have talked a lot about that we need to do a better job of, or college, which we've seen a steady stream of going up. And, and allowing our students to create and be part of what every major corporation is doing today, which is, why don't the two of you do your final in English together? You know, here's the genre that you can choose from. Let's go. Let's see it. Right? Let's allow for you to put together, and I use the script of a play or something, and guess what? You're gonna have to come up with a costume. You're gonna have to come up with the actual play itself, or the musical itself. You're gonna have to come up with a creative video clip. You're much better doing that than choosing A, B, C, D, in my opinion. And I think that's the discussions that I, I don't wanna speak for the high school staff, but what I wanna do is I wanna say to them, here, talk about it. Tell me what you think. Throw it against the wall and see what sticks. But what can't stick is that we're just gonna have, you know, four more days in the middle of the year, and four days at the end of the year, where we just have half-days because we're coming in to test. And when I look at the scores, and I do look at the scores, I'm not overly happy with them. Great conversation.
I just think that testing is always going to be part of the curriculum. It's not that you're taking tests away. Students still are gonna be held accountable to, to learn information, to somehow retain that information, and to somehow document that they know that information. I think testing throughout the year is great. You know, there has to be something that kind of allows us to have a gauge of where students are. I just think those sort of final tests at the end of the year may not necessarily be as, I don't know, just, may not be necessary.
And we welcome members of the committee, as we do with all of the other committees, that we have to be part of the homework, with the start time and all that stuff. So if you, if you really have a niche for it, and you, and, you know, some of these meetings will happen after school, some of them I'm sure will happen during school day. Most of them probably won't happen in the evening, but we can also make sure that the committee gets updates on a regular basis on where people are.
Yeah, I think if we can just get an invite, because maybe some of us may wanna be, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Long discussion there. Okay, the Panorama SEL Survey Administration.
Okay, thank you.
Back to me.
So as most of the committee is aware, we partnered last year with Panorama Education to engage our community, our families, our staff, and our students around the issue of school climate. And it was a very positive experience for us. We learned a lot from our students and our staff in this area. And what we were going to do is take the next step in administering a survey to all of our students in grades three through 12 that focuses primarily on SEL competencies. It will focus on five key areas. It will focus on grit, growth mindset, self-management, social awareness, and self-efficacy. And the reason that we're bringing this particular survey to the committee is because we're going to request that we not only collect data in, at the aggregate level for all of our students, but also collect individual student data around these SEL competencies.
And just to piggyback real quick, to be shared with classroom teachers and families. In other words, this is just not something that we're gonna do, would not then provide families.
Correct.
Information.
The reason that we want to collect this information at the individual student level is, is, as Dr. Byatt has said, to share that information with families, and to share that with classroom teachers, but also find ways that we can support students in these SEL competencies, whether it's planning curriculum, or perhaps identifying students that may need support at the school level. We believe this is really the next step for us in our SEL work. And obviously, the aggregate data will be shared with Mrs. Sullivan's SEL committee as we plan and look at curriculum and support for our students as well. We are going to send a letter out to all the parents of students in grades three through 12, and they will have the opportunity to opt their child out if they so choose. All of the surveys will begin roughly around November 1st.
Great, thank you.
Could you say some? What survey or what instrument are you gonna use for that?
It is, it's a survey that partners with Panorama Education.
Okay.
They create national surveys, and you're able to see the, the information at a national level as well. So based on norms.
I think in addition to this too, I know I sent you guys some information about that speaker, Joshua Massey. I think it's worth looking into him, because a lot of what you wrote here is what I heard back from other teachers who have had him come and speak. You know, he, he talks about the social emotional component, the grit, you know, what, what makes one kid or two kids have the same exact situation, and one kid choose this path, and the other kid choose this path. And how as educators, we can help those kids to always choose a good path. You know, so I would love to see you guys contact him and see if that's something that we can bring into the Norton schools for the teachers and personal, professional development days. It would be great.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions on that? Okay. Other business? Do you have some other?
Could you go back up to warrants?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Just read the warrants for the record.
Yep.
I have received and reviewed the following warrants in the amount of $665,061.8, and I'd like to enter them into public record.
Thank you.
That makes our, our friend at the end over here, Donna, very, very happy.
Look at the smile.
Well, I think what happens is, one that's written here for like, 500 and something.
Those are the ones I just signed, I think.
Those were last.
Right.
Meeting, so.
Oh, so do I have to say those again?
No.
No, no, no.
Those, then probably said, next meeting.
Right.
Gotcha.
Other business?
So, yeah, other business. I have a couple of things to deal with some things.
No, I can defer to you if you'd like.
It doesn't matter. I think that the first thing, I just wanted to kind of publicly thank the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen for, for approving the warrants for the Fall Town meeting. You might have the exact amounts, but I know for curriculum and professional development, it's 366.
It's curriculum, specifically materials and supplies, professional development, and then the Ready to Read Extended Program that we wanna do with families and students on the borderline of getting to that grade level for reading. It's $366,000. And then it's the Capital Improvement Committee, FinCon, Board of Selectmen have supported for the Town Meeting Monday, the capital items, which are the software of up to $60,000 for the backup system. The second is the $103,000 for the panels that are going to K-3, and then the technology. And then the third item was the pipe, up to $50,000 for the pipe situation over at the LGM.
So I think it's just nice to, you know, have their support on both of those things. And for people to remember that we do need you to show up to the Fall Town Meeting this coming Monday at 7 o'clock at the high school, because, you know, ultimately, it's up to the, the townspeople to vote those things through. So, but thank you to them for their support. And then one other thing I just wanted to bring up for you, Dr. Byatt, I'm wondering if you can discuss with the admin at the high school, the cell phone policy there. And just kind of see what, what the policy is, and, you know, if kids are allowed to use the cell phones during the day, that kind of thing. And maybe we could have a discussion on that. That would be great.
I would, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna turn this over to Matt, who took your idea to another level and got some stuff done. So I don't know if you wanna spend two seconds on?
Sure. So we created a senior citizen access pass that, so they didn't set.
Should give this to Dinesh.
Yeah. Very simple pass, doesn't expire, pretty sturdy. It's one of the cards, same cards that we're using for the, for the bus passes. So it's got a little, some have to it. I believe you guys are gonna be handing them out tomorrow at the Senior Center. So if anybody wants one, they can come on by and grab one. It costs us almost nothing to really produce these. They print out pretty quickly.
So is this a pass, access pass for all of our athletic events, and all of our community events within our schools, plays, musicals, or anything that's collecting money that's not necessarily being donated? And I think it's a great idea. Thanks to Sherri for bringing it back up and having us, through Aaron's offer, and then Matt put some stuff together. Number one. Number two, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. It's something we've talked about doing, but we really haven't done a really good job of following through all of them. And this is for, really, really important. It's for Norton residents only. So that's.
65 plus.
65 plus.
And they can also stop by the high school.
And my office.
And, oh, in your office, okay, to pick up their passes. And we just received word tonight that the Foxborough Sports Center is also honoring these passes for home hockey, varsity hockey games. Yeah, because the Foxborough Sports Center is our home rank, so they will also honor these passes there.
So thanks to all involved in that. I wanted to also. I wanted to also just recognize that after a lot of discussion that you folks have had and others, that the bid process is now online on our webpage under Matt, under the Business section. And starting with the plumbing one, it'll be the first one that will go up there. And we also have the Award section, whoever gets it. And then on the other side, under HR, also in that section is Contracts. So all of our collective bargaining contracts are also now posted for anyone to get. So if people want to go check them, they're, they're, there. The, we had a, two resignations in the last week and a half. One of them this week, Mrs. Almeida, who was the bump situation that took place when we had the budget cuts in food services that went to the high school. She is retiring effective the 19th of October. That means we'll be recalling the person who got bumped back to her original job at the high school. And then Mrs. Jean Karsis in the Special Education Office has taken another job in education. And we are reclassifying that job. I've shared that information with you tonight. That is not a new position, but we are reclassifying that to be more of a financial special education support person as well as helping Matt and Jean with transportation. We, we think we can do that. We, I've notified the Administrator's Union and said to them that we're making this move. It's a, it's a 12-month position. It's, it's reclassified. It's partially paid for. We'll be paid for it through circuit breakers since it's predominantly gonna be doing a lot more with that and analysis. And we think it's a, a great way at minimum funds, no funds relative to the operation budget that will be coming out of, out of special education because that's where it's gonna be spending a good significant time. This is a huge support for Jean's office. Jean Karsis has done a great job with all of it. I want to commend her for her years of, of doing it. This is a little bit of a change in the role and also kind of solidifies our transportation office a little bit. As you know, we've got so many hands in the cookie job with not only special education, transportation, our minivans and as well as general education, or I should say the yellow bus, transportation, that this is an opportunity for us to reclassify this and we're gonna move forward with that unless there's any objections from the committee. So I think that's, that's really an important thing. And I want to thank both of those ladies for the years of service and wish them well. You received a number of handouts from me this week. I just want to publicly note a couple of them. One of them is, I want to thank the Superintendent of the Water and Sewer Department, Mr. Marshall, for forwarding to me directly the latest results that I copied. As you can see, our lead testing, copper testing and, and so forth at entrance ways coming into the buildings are all in great shape. And those are available for anybody who would like to review them, either in his office or my office. You'd probably hate me for saying that, so go to his office. We did an air quality, indoor airborne mold test at the Solomon East School based upon some of the issues that we're having with a lot of sweating of the floors and the walls. Again, that came through Waze work and all of those results came back within, what they call within limits, if you will. I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. You have the By County Collaborative Quarterly Report, which you're supposed to get by statute. Same thing with Reed's. And then the one that's led to a lot of chatter today, which is, interesting enough, and I think Jean would support me, is this is not, I typically don't get these and a bunch of they came in. But it was the, it's our independent schools, private schools, for special education and the changes. And you will see that there's some significant increases with some of these. And Matt's made some calls to the state to see where these numbers are, you know, why all of a sudden we see, for example, a 26% increase. What's the, what's the meaning behind that 26%? So I would like your permission to request more information. You know, why, why is it 26%? So I'll have Matt and Jean's office kind of take the lead on that. Okay? Now, Jean, if you want to add to that at all.
No, these numbers are based on letters that we've received that these schools are requesting these increases from the OSD. But they haven't yet been approved and usually there's a process that's gone through for that. And sometime, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that they have a public hearing that's part of that.
It's difficult for these numbers to not, there's usually some real oomph behind why they need them. You know, I've seen some of these be about, we're opening, we're opening more space, so we're building something. So that's why it's costing $20,000 more a year because they have to be able to pay for it because they're grounded on tuition regardless if they're private. But Jean's right. It's kind of a little bit like the electrical process for when electrical companies want to raise your rates. They have to go to, through the Attorney General's office and go through a process. It's the same idea here and then Dusty makes determinations. But there are public hearings that take place with these as well.
And they don't always come out the way that they say that they're going to, but they have to let us know that they're asking.
Anything else?
No, just a reminder that we're meeting at 6:00 on Monday. You received your packets tonight and that's basically any discussions on FY19. Matt will share. You probably will have a panel meeting at that time. So we probably prefer Kathleen to, if you're here, if you're available to lead that meeting. I anticipate that we actually get done early so that we're available to, to do the typical stuff that happens during the Fall Town Meeting. I only, I only received three, but I, a personal handout from President Hanno. I belong to the College and Community, the Leachville College Community Council. And that's basically, as you know, he knows and looks inside coverage, knows his work with us. We continue to grow with our work with them, but the council's been a wonderful way. The Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kimball's on it, myself, IG, Leachville, et cetera.
Can you actually, so I'm technically still a member of that, I'm a 21 to that. They should probably send over to Sherri.
Okay, I can do that.
I think I actually sent them, you know, to ask them to do that.
Yes.
When Dan was in chair, I actually asked them to do that. I never did.
Okay.
I mean, all this time, I gotta know I'm not.
It's usually a nice breakfast.
Missed out with Dan, you missed out.
It's usually at 8:00 and we're usually done right around 9:00, 9:15. And people do leave early because they have to go to work.
All right, just very quickly, we all want to get out of here. Nobody more than me. Has Bloom called us back yet?
No.
All right, so let's start with the conversation.
Yeah. And then just reminders, Fall Town Meeting, Monday, December, oh my God, October 15th, 7:00 PM at the high school. And then our next school committee meeting, October 25th, at 6:30 at the Norton High School. Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.